I'm sorry. It's your turn, so we're going to add to the word.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and this is a world with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry for the earlier delay. Please call the roll.
Mayor Delacqua.
Here.
Director Blahnik Nattalo.
Here.
Director of...
Director of Finance.
Councilman-at-Large Bicker.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Cranick.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Treppes.
Here.
Board One Councilman Biaseata.
Here.
Board Two Councilman Fondor.
Here.
Board Three Councilman Kukrow.
Here.
Board Four Councilman Pietro.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties Louise.
Here.
Building Commissioner Morrow. Assistant Law Director DeChiro.
Here.
Okay, we'll begin with the reading and disposal of the Journal, the meeting minutes of the regular council meeting held January 9th, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Fondor.
Having read the council minutes of the council meeting held January 9th, and I have to tell everyone in the audience, and will be viewing this on YouTube, it's darn interesting reading. I find no errors or omissions, and therefore I approve, I make a motion that they be approved as...
I second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Consent agenda dated February 13th, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Fondor.
I move, if there's no division of the question, I move that we accept the consent agenda dated February 13th, 2017.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Consent agenda dated February 13th, 2017 has been passed. We will now move on to, we have three resolutions of commendation for city employees who have retired, and none of them are in the audience this evening, so we're going to read these by title only. Let's begin with Resolution Number 2, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cranick.
I move that we re-Resolution Number 2, 2017, as you said, by title only for its final reading.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Resolution Number 2, 2017 has been adopted. Oh, trying to rush through the former police chief, sorry about that.
Resolution Number 2, 2017.
Inside joke for anybody that's new here.
Introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Treppes, Fondor, Bicker, Cranick, Biaseata, Kukrow, and Pietro. Resolution of commendation to Chief of Police Gary Durkin for 35 years of service at City of Seven Hills, Ohio.
Okay, Resolution Number 2, 2017 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Cranick.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2, 2017.
I second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Resolution Number 2, 2017 has now been adopted. Moving on to Resolution Number 3, 2017.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Pietro.
I move that council suspends rules under the Charter and reads Resolution Number 3, 2017 by title only for its final reading.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution Number 3, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Treppes, Fondor, Bicker, Cranick, Biaseata, Kukrow, and Pietro. A resolution of commendation to Captain John Gladysuski, Seven Hills Department of Fire, City of Seven Hills, Ohio.
Resolution Number 3, 2017 has been read for its final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Pietro.
I move that council adopts Resolution 3, 2017.
I second.
Is there any discussion? I'd just like to mention that Captain John Gladysuski was a longtime member of our Seven Hills Fire Department. He was a terrific fireman, is a terrific person, and I thank him for his service to the City of Seven Hills, I'll be sorely missed. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Resolution Number 3, 2017 has been adopted. Moving on to Resolution Number 4, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Fondor.
I move that council suspends the rules under the Charter and reads Resolution Number 4, 2017 by title only for its first and final reading.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution Number 4, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Treppes, Fondor, Bicker, Cranick, Biaseata, Kukrow, and Pietro. A resolution of commendation to Joseph O'Donnell, Zoning Board of Appeals, City of Seven Hills, Ohio.
Resolution Number 4, 2017 has been read for its final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Fondor.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 4, 2017.
I second.
Is there any discussion? I also would like to thank Mr. O'Donnell for his service on our Zoning Board of Appeals. Both he and his wife have been involved with the Seven Hills Historical Society and many other things in our city, and they recently moved, and we appreciate their dedication to Seven Hills. Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Resolution Number 4, 2017 has been adopted. Moving on to the reports of committees, we'll begin with the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee. Our last meeting was held on January 20, January 16th. Those meeting minutes have been filed with the clerk, and our next meeting will be held on, excuse me, February 21st. Public Works Committee, Councilman Pietro.
Mr. Chairman, our last meeting was on February 6th, and the meeting, and the minutes are on file with the clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Community Services, Councilman Bicker.
Mr. President, our last meeting was the 6th, and next meeting is March 3rd. Minutes are filed with the clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Police and Safety, Councilman Cranick.
Yes, Mr. President, our next police and safety meeting will be on a Tuesday for all those who would wish to attend, February 21st, and our last meeting's minutes will be on file with the clerk.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Kukrow.
Thank you, Mr. President, our last meeting was on February 6th, and our next meeting is on the 21st, and the meeting minutes are forthcoming.
Thank you, Councilman. Rules, Ordinances, and Ethics, Councilman Biaseata.
Thank you, Mr. President, our regularly scheduled meeting on February 6th was postponed on February 21st, and we are up to date on our minutes.
Thank you, Councilman. Finance, Civil Service, and Personnel, Councilman Fondor.
Yes, Mr. President, our last meeting was held on February 6th, our next meeting will be held on February 21st, and the minutes are on file with the council clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any appointments and confirmations this evening?
Mr. President, is this where I would request the appointment of the chief as a February 3rd police chief?
We're going to do that in miscellaneous.
Okay.
At the end.
Then there are others for this evening.
Thank you. Is that the right way to do it, Mr. Law Director?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Communications, Petitions, and Claims.
Yes, I have two items this evening. The first is a short note from Casimir Asowski from East Park Haven Drive, addressed to Mayor Delacqua. Thanks for all your good work in and for our city. The police and fire were at our home in minutes when my husband fell and broke his hip. He is now at Seven Hills Rehab Center. Only time will tell. I am sure he'll, he will get home soon. Thanks again, Casey and Helen Asowski of East Park Haven. I have an email that was sent this afternoon from Jan Grabowski regarding cost of cable services. She lives at 812 Chestnut Road, and she asked that this be read into the record. She writes, "With both city and school taxes going up, I'm trying to find ways to save money. I was trying to cut the cost of my bundled cable bill. I explored the new cable system Spectrum. The cost is a savings of $100 a month. Spectrum advised me that they are not allowed to provide service in Seven Hills. This is perplexing when I have friends further down Chestnut Road, and their address is Independence and have free competition. I feel that it is a financial burden and unfair. I've been told by friends that there is an agreement with Cox to provide free service to the schools. There is no competition in the school district. Why should I have to pay for this free service at the additional cost of $100 per month? If this is true, how can you, as a city leader, protect me from this monopoly? Should I not be able to claim this as property taxes for either the city or the schools? I'm requesting that you investigate the situation, and requesting that you allow for free competition within our city to alleviate the monopoly. If you can't do anything, I would like to claim the additional $1,200 I'm required to pay for the city and schools that prohibits free competition. I shall be at the city council meeting tonight, and would like this letter read into the official minutes. Janice Grabowski." And that's all we have tonight.
Thank you. Okay, council will now be open to the audience on legislation only. If you have any comments regarding anything on our agenda this evening, please approach to podium and state your name and address.
Carol Zupansik, 2725, Chestnut Road, and this is regarding Ordinance 24, 2017. I'm asking that you reconsider putting the full-time mayor issue on the ballot in May. Why? I'm always suspicious about issues presented to the voters in a midterm election. Fewer people come to the polls than for a general election, and voters get the impression that the issue's sponsors are trying to sneak something through. They feel that they can mobilize their supporters to get to the polls while keeping information out of the hands of the bill's detractor. This would be very bad for a political image. Through online discussion and conversation with fellow residents, I would conclude that this issue would crash and burn if put on in May. I have spoken to no one who is in support of this. So you have your work cut out for you to convince your constituents that Seven Hills really needs a full-time mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody further in the audience? Okay. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, Ordinance Number 13, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cranick.
I would move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read Ordinance Number 13, 2017 by title only for its final reading.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 13, 2017, introduced by Councilman Treppes, Fondor, Bicker, Cranick, Kukrow, and Pietro. Do you like your name removed, Mr. Biaseata?
That's a good idea. Thank you.
And ordinance authorizing mayor to enter into an agreement with Bank of America Emergency Services for credit card processing fees for payments and fines in the police department, mayor's court, building department, and recreation center for the period covering January 1st through December 31st, 2017, authorizing an amount not to exceed $20,000 for said service and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance Number 13, 2017 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Cranick.
I would move that we pass Ordinance Number 13, 2017.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Ordinance Number 13, 2017 has been passed. Moving on to Ordinance Number 14, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read Ordinance 14-2017 by title only for its first time and declaring an emergency.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 14, 2017, introduced by Councilman Treppes, Fondor, Bicker, Cranick, Biaseata, Kukrow, and Pietro. A moral claim authorizing and directing the finance director to pay Richard T. Knight of 770 Aspenwood Drive, Seven Hills, Ohio, a sum not to exceed $80 as reimbursement for damages to his vehicle as a result of a pothole in the road caused by a water main break on Oakwood Drive and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance Number 14, 2017 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we pass Ordinance 14-2017.
I second the motion, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Ordinance Number 17, 2017 has been passed. Moving on to Ordinance Number 15, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we waive the 24-hour rule and suspend the rules under the Charter and amend Ordinance Number 15, 2017 to substitute a new contract.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Ordinance Number 15, 2017 has been amended. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we read amended Ordinance Number 15, 2017.
I second.
By title only.
Oh, excuse me, by title only for its first and final reading.
Still second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended Ordinance Number 15, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Treppes, Fondor, Bicker, Cranick, Biaseata, Kukrow, and Pietro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Green Advisory Services LLC for professional services in regard to evaluating the financial implications of outsourcing the City of Seven Hills Building Department, appropriating an amount not to exceed $3,000 for said service and declaring an emergency.
Amended Ordinance Number 15, 2017 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we pass amended Ordinance Number 15, 2017.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I just want to mention, I'm very excited for this financial study to be conducted. For anybody that isn't aware of this yet, council's been working towards at least exploring the possibility of outsourcing our building department to a company named Safebuilt. This outside CPA is going to take a look at our expenses versus revenues and compare them to the contract and just verify that this will indeed be a cost savings, and on top of that, it will certainly increase our services for our residents and the timeliness of matters that are handled in the building department. Please call the roll. Who has the new contract? Who has the new contract to attach to this? Good?
Yeah.
All right, please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Amended Ordinance Number 15, 2017 has passed. We will now have the first reading of Ordinance Number 16, 2017.
Ordinance Number 16, 2017, introduced by Councilman Treppes, Fondor, Bicker, Cranick, Biaseata, Kukrow, and Pietro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Larson Lumber of Brooksville, Ohio, for the purpose of purchasing a 20-by-28-by-8-foot open four-side pavilion package with appurtenances to be constructed at Calvin Park and appropriating the sum not to exceed $10,786.34 for said purchase.
Ordinance Number 16, 2017 has been read for its first reading. We will now have the first reading of Ordinance Number 17, 2017.
Ordinance Number 17, 2017, introduced by Councilman Treppes, Fondor, Bicker, Cranick, Biaseata, Kukrow, and Pietro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Home Field Turf and Athletic Incorporated for labor and installation services at Valleywood Baseball Field to improve the grade and playing surface and appropriating the sum not to exceed $5,200 for said service.
Ordinance Number 17, 2017 has been read for its first reading. We'll now have the first reading, excuse me, of Ordinance Number 18, 2017.
Ordinance Number 18, 2017, introduced by Councilman Treppes, Fondor, Bicker, Cranick, Biaseata, Kukrow, and Pietro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Natural Sand Company Incorporated, a division of Dura Edge Products Incorporated, for the purpose of furnishing 150 bulk tons Dura Edge Classic Infield Mix and six bulk tons of Pro Slide Classic Red Top Dressing for the Valleywood Fields and appropriating the sum not to exceed $10,428 for said purchase.
Ordinance Number 18, 2017 has been read for its first reading. We will now move on to Ordinance Number 19, 2017.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, Councilman Pietro.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Ordinance 19, 2017 by adding the emergency clause.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treppes.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Ordinance Number 19, 2017 has been amended to add the emergency clause. Is there a, is there a further motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Pietro.
Move that council suspends the rules under the Charter and reads Ordinance 19, 2017 by title only for its final reading.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Biaseata.
I just want the record to state that this does not add an expense to the city and most likely will result in a profit, and that's why we're okay adding the emergency.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further conversation? Please call the roll.
Biaseata.
Yes.
Fondor.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow. Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 19-2017 introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Krainik, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio with Kissel Amusement Company of Cincinnati, Ohio for the purpose of providing amusement rides, game concessions, and food confectionery concessions for the city of Seven Hills 2017 home days.
Amended ordinance number 19-2017 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there any motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Petro?
I move that council passes ordinance 19-2017.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Krainik?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-2017 has passed. We will now have the first reading of ordinance number 20-2017.
Ordinance number 20-2017 introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Krainik, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Miller &amp; Company Portable Toilet Service Incorporated of Canton, Ohio to provide portable toilet service to the city of Seven Hills 2017 home days, July 28th and 29th, 2017, and authorizing an amount not to exceed $435 for said service.
Ordinance number 20-2017 has been read for its first reading. We will now have the first reading of ordinance number 21-2017.
Ordinance number 21-2017 introduced by Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Krainik, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Miller &amp; Company Portable Toilet Service Incorporated of Canton, Ohio to provide portable toilet service for some of few comments, North Park, John Glenn Park, Calvin Park, and the city's Seven Hills Farmer's Market, and authorizing an amount not to exceed $2,661.25 for said service.
Ordinance number 21-2017 has been read for its first reading. Okay, moving on to the first reading of ordinance number 22-2017.
Ordinance number 22-2017 introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Krainik, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio with Prime Pay of West Chester, Pennsylvania for professional services for the 1095, 1094 mandated reporting for year 2017 as a result of the Affordable Care Act and authorizing an amount not to exceed $4,500 for said service.
Ordinance number 22-2017 has been read for its first reading. We will now have the first reading of ordinance number 23-2017.
Ordinance number 23-2017 introduced by Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Krainik, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance to amend subsections 911.06, 8, and 9 as contained in section 911.06, conditions precedent to final approval of record map issuance of building permits as contained in chapter 911, acceptance and dedication of subdivisions generally of Title III Plats and Plating of Part 9 Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio.
Ordinance number 23-2017 has been read for its first reading. We will now have the first reading of ordinance number 24-2017.
Ordinance number 24-2017 introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Krainik, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, a certain charter amendment pursuant to Article 10 of the Charter of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio for the purpose of amending Article 4, the mayor, Section 1 term proposing that the office of mayor, safety director be a full-time position.
Ordinance number 24-2017 has been read for its first reading. We will now have the first reading of ordinance number 25-2017.
Ordinance number 25-2017 introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Krainik, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, a certain charter amendment pursuant to Article 10 of the Charter of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio for the purpose of amending Article 5, administrative departments, boards, and commissions by creating a new Section 10 Financial Advisory Board.
Ordinance number 25-2017 has been read for its first reading. We will now move on to ordinance number 26-2017.
Mr. President?
Councilman Bicker?
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and amend ordinance 26-2017 by removing the emergency.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman?
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Krainik?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 26-2017 has been amended to remove the emergency clause.
Mr. President?
We will now have the first reading of ordinance number 26-2017.
Amended ordinance number 26-2017 introduced by Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Krainik, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance to amend section 729.03a, computation of charges as contained in chapter 729, sewer rates of Title III Public Utilities of Part 7 Streets and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio for the purpose of amending the storm drainage and sanitary sewer system service or rental charges.
Ordinance number 26, amended ordinance number 26-2017 has been read for its first reading. We'll now move on to ordinance number 27-2017.
Yes, Mr. President?
Councilman Frondor?
I move that we amend ordinance number 27-2017.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
You have to go through each change.
Okay, all right, I will amend as follows. In the title, in the line that says, "We're by an applicant with a preliminary plan," we need to include the word "development." In the sentence that says, "Development plan area in such approved preliminary plan," we have to add the word "development." On page number three, under 979.07, second paragraph, remove "and grading." Same paragraph, add, "Or if the applicant obtains a special permit allowing for tree removal between April 1st, 2017 and October 20th, 2017 from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, then in such event, an application to the city for tree removal may be made later than October 1st, 2017." In the first subsection, number one, addition, add, under city codified ordinance section 707.051, comma, "as applicable," adding "as applicable." Subsection two, "Such applications," plural, striking S, so we'll read "Such application for tree vegetation and striking and grading" from that sentence. Page number four, subsection D, adding, "The bond shall not be returned or released until such time as all provisions of this section and all conditions of the permit have been satisfactorily complied with as determined by the building commissioner, including but not limited to cleanup operations and erosion control measures." Subsection number three, adding, "Further, the following major activities will be permitted as approved by the city engineer: a temporary construction entrance, temporary control measures, sediment control basins, and stripping and stockpiling or hauling off-site of topsoil. Striking the grading which may be approved hereunder shall mean only stripping of topsoil, leaving--topsoil may be stripped to a maximum depth of 18 inches of material and striking and stockpiling of material on-site or hauling off-site." Page number five, subsection five, adding, "The permit for tree removal," in sentence, "The building commissioner shall issue," then adding "the permit for tree removal," and then the next sentence, "No work shall commence," we're adding "until the permit has been issued." And that, those are the amendments.
And I will second that motion. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Krainik?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 27-2017 has been amended. We will now have the first reading of amended--
No, we're gonna have the first reading of amended ordinance number 27-2017, and then we'll refer to the planning commission.
Amended ordinance number 27-2017 introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Krainik, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance to amend section 979.07, preliminary development plan supplemental requirements as contained in chapter 979, Rockside Road South Planned Unit Development District of Title IX Zoning Use Districts of Part 9 Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio for the purpose of amending the prohibition against tree vegetation removal or grading on property in the Rockside Road South PUD District prior to the approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter and to provide a procedure whereby an applicant with a preliminary development plan, approved pursuant to this chapter, may apply for and obtain approval for tree vegetation and grading on all or parts of the property identified as being the preliminary development plan area in such approved preliminary development plan prior to approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter.
Ordinance number 27-2017 has been read, amended ordinance number 27-2017 has been read for its first reading.
Mr. President?
Councilman Biassiatah?
I'd like to make a motion to refer ordinance number 27-2017 to the planning commission.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I'd like to mention that this is an amendment to the planned unit development ordinance regarding development on Rockside Road. As many people are aware, that ordinance, that original ordinance took nearly a year to craft, and it's certainly a working document. This amendment that we are forwarding to the planning commission will help expedite the development. They will, once, if this gets approved, the developer will then be allowed to start knocking trees down in preparation for a groundbreaking and the beginning of the construction. Please call the roll.
Biassiatah?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Krainik?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
The amended ordinance number 27-2017 has been referred to our planning commission. Moving on to amended resolution number 1-2017.
Mr. President?
Councilman Kukral?
I move that we table amended resolution number 1-2017.
I second the motion, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Mr. DeChiro, would you give your update now, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of this ordinance, I was looking into the settlement and regarding the Ohio Ethics Commission conducted an investigation to which the city of Seven Hills was not a party, into Ms. Lechner voting on pay increases for the fire department. The city of Seven Hills, again, was not a party to this, but at the end of the matter, a resolution was reached between the Ohio Ethics Commission and Ms. Lechner, and Ms. Lechner was represented by council. At that time, it was determined that she would receive a public reprimand and that she would reimburse the city of Seven Hills $2,112.50. How that number was arrived at, I have no idea. Does not match the number that finance has come up with, along with assistance of council. So, it's about $200 short, but the question is whether we can collect on that extra $200. We're not a party. It was their show, and there's a signed settlement agreement, and I don't know that we can open it up. She has agreed to a public reprimand, and she has agreed to pay the money, which she has done. So, question is, can we impose an extra $200 on her? So, I will call the attorney who represented the Ohio Ethics Commission, Julie Corte, and find out if that's a possibility, because again, maybe this was a settlement number, maybe they arrived at the wrong number, and if they did, we may be stuck with it. So, but like I said, their computations are a little off, and I'd like to look into it a little more if your permission is of the president.
Yes, thank you for that update, and we certainly will do whatever is right and legal to put this matter to bed. Please call the roll.
Biassiatah?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Krainik?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Amended resolution number 1-2017 has been tabled. Okay, council will now be open to the audience. If you have any comments regarding anything on your mind, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jan Grobowski. I live at 810 Chestnut Road.
Hi.
I had a question about the special election for the full-time, making the mayor's position full-time. Can you tell me what the cost of the election will be for a special election for, to have that held? What will be our cost?
This is not a special election. This is a regularly scheduled primary election. And the reason we are having an election in Seven Hills this May is because the Parma City School District is putting a tax levy on the ballot.
Oh, where is that?
If that issue was not on the ballot, we would not have an election scheduled, and more than likely, I don't think we would be placing this on the ballot, but since there's already an election, it won't cost us anything but drafting up the ballot language.
You're gonna not have to pay a portion to open all the voting places and have the election run. You'll have no cost other than writing the language?
Any cost that is associated with this election is because the Parma School District already placed something on the ballot. So whether or not this item and the Financial Advisory Board Charter Amendment is on the ballot or not, we're gonna incur the same cost as far as that.
Okay, well, thank you.
No problem. Anybody further in the audience? Okay, we will now have the reports and communications from the mayor and safety director, Mayor Delaculla.
Now, thank you, Mr. President. Again, just very briefly, as council is aware, the administration is working to put together home days for this year. It's gonna be, we believe, an abbreviated version of what we've done in the past, a Friday night and a full day on Saturday. We're hoping to get some fireworks together as well, if we can find sponsors for it. I want to thank council for passing the ride ordinance tonight, as I mentioned in the caucus room. I know that Kissel, the ride vendor, is now actively filling their calendar, believe it or not, this early in the year. We certainly didn't want to lose the opportunity to bring them on board. They've done such a great job for the city in the past, and it is profitable for the city. It's part of the cost-saving measures that we're looking at. I had a meeting with a few of the mayors in our area a week or so ago. Mentioned to me that one of their local home days is patrolled by the county sheriff's department. So, we've contacted the county sheriff to see whether or not we can avail ourselves of that same opportunity. I'm given to understand that it's actually without charge. So, we're looking at that. That would save a few thousand dollars if we can put that in place as well. We'll have a further report on that down the road. Some other good news today, with the continued efforts of our service director and our engineering department to constantly find savings for the city, we received a letter today from Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works dated February 6th. I'll just very briefly read the top of it, and I'd like to submit it with your permission for council to include in the minutes. Dear Mayor Delaculla, thank you for submitting projects for the roadway maintenance program. The Department of Public Works has completed the review of all projects submitted. The infrastructure need in Cuyahoga County is extensive, and budget constraints only allow the county to fund a limited amount of projects in 2017. Congratulations. The following projects have been selected for 2017 maintenance program. They list, I'll just very briefly list the streets. It's a total of $36,000. These are all county roads in our city. Chestnut, Crossview, East Sprague, East Pleasant Valley, Ridgewood, and Rockside Roads. I won't belabor the rest of the letter, but it is $36,000. Signed, Michael W. Dever, MPA, Director of Public Works. Again, thank you, Stuart, for your work in accomplishing this on behalf of the city. Mr. President, I'd like to submit this letter for the minutes.
Please do. You can pass it on to Carol.
And I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. That was great news. Okay, reports from the directors of departments and other officials. Let's start with the director of law, Richard Pignatello.
You're referring to assistant director?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council. First off, I just wanted to make mention of Gary Durkin's resolution. I've been with Gary for 22 years, and I commend him on his retirement, long time coming. His brothers seem to have retired before him, John and Ron, both were also members of the Seven Hills Police Department at one time. So, Gary hung around the longest, so I guess he had it in. The other guys were pretty much 25 and out, and so I just wanted to make congratulations to Gary Durkin on his retirement. Now, to a more serious matter, everybody's aware that we are working on a development on Rockside Road.
Turn the microphone closer.
Working on a development on Rockside Road. It's been a long time in coming. I've been here for 22 years. We've been trying to work on something, some sort of development, some sort of business there, and finally, I see it coming to fruition. As many of you know, I do not sit on the planning commission. Mr. Pignatello, my boss, has appointed Chris Tobin, who sits on the planning commission, and she does an excellent job. However, recently, it has come to my attention, through council, through the mayor, through my boss, Mr. Pignatello, through the planning commission chairman, Mr. Ruffa, and through Ms. Tobin, that there's problems, specifically problems concerning one of our members in this development. And it jeopardizes the development, and it jeopardizes the city of Seven Hills as it pertains to litigation. That's why I've been asked to get involved. I mainly handle the prosecution, and I assist Mr. Pignatello in all our civil actions. So, when I get involved, it's usually a serious matter, and that's why Mr. Pignatello's asked me to get involved. So, the planning commission member that we are talking about is a Thomas Gerros, and I've had occasion to review some of the matters, some of the things that have been going on with the planning commission over the last year. I've spoken to some of the interested parties. I've reviewed documents and letters, and I can state with certainty it's not good. I mean, Mr. Gerros's actions poses, could bring upon our city litigation, and I don't think he realizes that he's a citizen, but now he's a planning commission member, which means he is a member of the city of Seven Hills government. Anything he does can subject this city to liability. He can no longer just say, "I'm a citizen standing up." We have recourse as public officials, and we have recourse not only individually, but against the city, anything we do. So, basically, over the course of the last few months in my review of this matter, I've come to the conclusion that we may have to remove Mr. Gerros. I don't know why my microphone keeps going out. We may have to remove Mr. Gerros from the planning commission. And I say that, I'm not happy about it. I know Tom, and I like Tom, but his conduct cannot continue. And I just want to state for the record what my findings are, or what my complaints would be, and they're very general. If there comes a time that we have a public hearing, I will provide the evidence and witnesses to back up these statements, but these are my allegations, and there are six of them. Number one, that Mr. Gerros has exhibited a bias against the developer currently doing-- to back up these statements, but these are my allegations, and there are six of them. Number one, that Mr. Jeros has exhibited a bias against the developer currently doing business in the city of Seven Hills, and who has appeared before the planning commission and council, to which Mr. Jeros has continually posted negative comments on social media regarding Grenz Landing LLC and Lansong LTD. Here and after referred to as the developer, who is a developer currently doing business in the city of Seven Hills. That's number one. Number two, despite a clear bias by posting these negative comments regarding the aforementioned developer and having engaged in recent litigation with the developer whereby Mr. Jeros was a representative of Stone Ridge Maintenance Association, who was suing this developer, Mr. Jeros has been difficult about recusing himself from matters pertaining to this developer, and has indicated at the December 8, 2016, planning commission that he is not going to recuse himself any further, which I think is a problem, and he's indicated that, by the way, in a recent letter that I found, too. Mr. Jeros, number three, Mr. Jeros has maliciously interfered with contracts and/or permits of this developer by directly contacting the property owner of the property that the developer plans on developing, and by contacting the Army Corps of Engineers regarding developer's permit regarding the wetlands located on the property to be developed. In law, we call this tortuous interference of contract. You can't interfere with another man's contract, not even the city of Seven Hills. We don't have that authority. Everybody has a right to make a livelihood, and that in itself is a cause of action that could be rendered against the city of Seven Hills. Number four, respondent is engaging in actions and conduct beyond his scope and authority as a planning commission member. I've reviewed the planning commission and what their duties are, and their duties aren't to go do all this investigation. In fact, I don't even think council does this type of investigation. If there are problems with the Army Corps of Engineer or with the owner, they could contact the law department, they could contact the president of council, they could contact the mayor. Number five, respondent is engaging in conduct that places the city of Seven Hills in a vacarious situation, since respondent is an officer of the city of Seven Hills and subjects the city of Seven Hills to liability for respondent's actions. What that means is, he's an officer of the Seven Hills. Anything he does reflects upon us and subjects us to liability. Your conduct could subject us to liability, any officer. And finally, number six, respondent's actions are denying the developer its right to due process. So, the developer has a right to a fair and impartial hearing, and it's my belief that if Mr. Jeros sits on that planning commission, he's not gonna get that. So, for these reasons, I'm ultimately gonna be asked that he remove himself, but he's contacting an attorney, Mr. Joe Salzberger. I've had contact with him, and so I think for the time being, you know, we're gonna try to work this thing out, but I have to make, I have to make a recommendation, and that is this, before removal, we have some things coming up in front of the planning commission. I think it would behoove ourselves, and I'm gonna recommend this to you, Mr. Mayor, that pursuant to Article Five, Section Seven of the Seven Hills Charter, the mayor at any time may suspend any commissioner for inefficiency, neglect of duty, malfeasance, misfeasance, or nonfeasance in office. Incapacity or incompetency provided, however, that such suspension shall not become final without concurrence of five of the members of council. I believe, and I've researched the definitions under Blacks and under Webster, that this constitutes not only misfeasance, but bias, which could render him incompetent. So, with that said, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna, it is the recommendation of the law department that he be suspended until such time we could determine what to do further, and in order to protect the city from any future liability, and in order to protect this development that's going forward. And with that said, that will be my recommendation. And I hope council hears me on this one, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be open if they would direct them towards me right now. So, with that said, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna make that recommendation tonight, that you at least issue a suspension for now, until hopefully myself and Mr. Jeros' attorney can work this thing out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeChiro. Anything further from the law department?
No.
Got out of that one, too. Director of Public Services and Properties, Stuart Labeece.
Yes, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the kind words, and I also want to thank Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works for having this monetary incentive program, and it's a win-win. These are county roads, but we are required to maintain them. County from time to time funds, you know, upgrading the road and replacement like they've done on, on Rockside and, and East Pleasant Valley. So, I want to thank the County Department of Public Works. That's all I have.
Thank you, Stuart. Okay, we'll move on to miscellaneous.
Mr. President, may I be heard first?
Yes, Mayor Delacqua.
Thank you. This is difficult, however, we must always remember that our duty here is to put the city before any personal feelings. And therefore, it is my duty, as outlined by the law department, under Article Five, Section Seven of the city charter, to request the concurrence of council in the suspension of Thomas Jeros from the planning commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's move on. Councilman Frondor.
Yes. I'm having trouble with this as well.
Yeah.
Can you hear me out there?
It's been going in and out on me. I didn't, I thought it was me.
Sounds, it just sounds out of. At any rate, I would like to follow up on the mayor's request. I move that council approve the mayor's request for suspension of Tom Jeros from the planning commission.
I would second that. Is there any discussion?
May I add something, Matt?
Mr. DeChiro.
I just wanted to be upfront with this, and I felt I owed it to Tom and his attorney. I told, I gave them some of the documentation. I got contacted Friday, so I worked on this most of the weekend, wrote up a little something for him to review, gave his attorney documentation, and told him that I would be recommending suspension this evening. So, everything I have done up to this point, I've tried to do above board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Viasseada?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Treffus?
Yes.
Dicker?
Yes. Thomas Jeros has been suspended from our planning commission. Okay, council miscellaneous, anything further? Councilman Frondor.
Yes, I wanted to make a comment. There was a petition that was read earlier regarding cable and, you know, the possibility of reducing what the cost of that service. And in the petition, it was stated that Seven Hills prohibited other companies other than Cox to be a cable service provider or a internet supplier, and the fact of the matter is, that's not true. Seven Hills places no restriction on any company that would want to come in and provide this type of service. We've had this discussion before. I know it came up about a year, my first term in, on council. And I know it was confirmed by our law director that this is a commercial decision on the part of the provider, whether they want to move into Seven Hills or not, and it's, you know, it's as simple as that.
Thank you, councilman, for the clarification. Councilman Petro.
I have no miscellaneous, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Kukrow?
Nothing.
Councilman Kranek?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Councilman Dicker?
Nothing.
Councilman Viasseada?
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, want to wish a very, very special happy anniversary to two Seven Hills residents. It is my parents' 57th wedding anniversary today. So, thank you, Mom and Dad. You're the best. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilman. Congratulations to them. Just a couple of things. As we all know, on February 3rd, the city of Seven Hills hired a new police chief. I'd like to welcome, on behalf of city council, Chief Michael Salum, and congratulate him on his promotion. I'm extremely excited to have a new direction in our police department. I think it is sorely needed, and I do believe that Chief Salum is the right person for that job, and I'm excited to see what he brings to the table. But with that, we do have a hiring and wage freeze in place, so I'm gonna make a motion to lift the hiring and wage freeze retroactive to the date of hiring of February 3rd, 2017, for Michael Salum as our chief of police.
I will second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Viasseada?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Treffus?
Yes.
Dicker?
Yes. Okay, the hiring and wage freeze has been lifted for new police chief, Michael Salum. Congratulations again to the chief. Only one, believe it or not, only one more thing for me. It's pretty odd, huh? In regards to the two charter amendments that are on the agenda, that were just read for the first reading, the financial advisory board and the full-time mayor, I want to make it clear that these ordinances aren't necessarily gonna go on the ballot. We're still discussing it. It was set for first reading. We're welcoming more comments and opinions from our residents. Somebody feels otherwise, convince us. That's okay. That's what this is about. But ultimately, for both of these charter amendments, it's not us that will be implementing them, it's you, the voters. All council can do is give our residents a choice on whether or not they want to amend our charter or not. Now, something came to mind, in order to, now we're getting feedback, in order to allow for three readings of this, of these two ordinances, and in order to meet the deadline with the board of elections, we would need to have a special council meeting next Monday during our regularly scheduled caucus meeting, just to read it for a second time. If nobody on council has issue with that, I'm gonna call that special meeting for next Monday to allow Tuesday. Thank you, Monday's a holiday. But I plan on calling that special meeting to give it a second reading and give residents an opportunity to come up and speak. Does anybody have issue with that? Councilman Kukrow?
I don't have any issue with it. I just, I've been ill for the last week. I've been working on a lot of data. I know people online have been saying, "Where's the justification?", all that stuff. I believe, you know, for the full-time mayor thing's important, and I just haven't had time to put it all together, so that'd be great.
Lastly, Stuart, thank you for your work on receiving that grant money from Cuyahoga County, that reimbursable money. That'll help. And with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Please call the roll.
Viasseada?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Treffus?
Yes.
Dicker?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.
I'm making it nine-thirty. Good enough. Did I shoot? He's got a cane. Somebody got a cane that's bad, having to carry it. Got some questions.